We're going to open up the regular session of the Asbury Park City Council meeting. We have already done roll calls, so at this time, please rise for the silent prayer and a moment of reflection. Slit the flag, please. Act our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 2, 2015, and posted on a bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file in the city clerk's office. At this time, we have two proclamations. The first one is recognizing the Second Baptist Church, and the second one is recognizing Cathedral International Asbury Park.
I know people, Danny and others from the Second Baptist Church. If you want to come over here. Yvonne Clayton is gracious enough to read both proclamations, just because her voice is much better than mine. So, please.
Whereas, in 1885, the Second Baptist Church of Asbury Park was the status and position of its first newly appointed pastor, Reverend R.A. Bowman of New York. And whereas, a large meeting place was sought as membership increased, leading congregants to elect or order trustees in order to become incorporated under provisions of an act to incorporate trustees of religious societies. And whereas, on October 2, 1891, the certificate of incorporation was officially recorded with S.G. Pilger, S. Short, J. Riley, Sr., Williams H. Clark, J. Barber, Steve Ward, and Steve Smith as the first trustees. And whereas, on October 25, 1901, marked a new era in the church's history with the leadership of Reverend J.C. Price. Second Baptist Church acquired land and ownership of a building which was later moved to its present location on Atkins Avenue. And whereas, the beautifications and expansion of the church building, as well as the growth of membership continues from the time Reverend Price and his successors, who had and continue serve the church, its congregants, and the community faithfully until this day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Asbury Park's mayor and city council do hereby acknowledge Second Baptist Church for their many contributions and years of outstanding service to the members of our community. Be it furthermore resolved that the mayor and city council congratulate Second Baptist Church on 130 years and wish them many more years.
On behalf of Second Baptist Church of Asbury Park, we thank the city of Asbury Park for the proclamation. We invite all of you to join us this Sunday at our 10:00 a.m. service as we begin celebrating 130 years under God's grace. And in the afternoon, you can stand in the lobby and watch us have our man.
Second Baptist Church and our board of trustees, our board of deacons, and our honorable Reverend William Coleman would like to thank the city of Asbury Park, so working closely with us. A lot of people don't understand that there are times where John Moore comes to our church, sits in Jesse Kendall and Tony Nucio, and we actually sit down upstairs and hash our problems in the city, and they've made us actually part of the city. A lot of times, people forget about churches in Asbury Park, which they're close to 40, but they've actually made a concerted effort to include the church in the community. And I think that's fine, because if you find out how many programs are run by the churches in the community, maybe some of these problems that exist, we can assist in getting rid of these problems, and especially our things with our youth. So, once again, I'd like to thank the city of Asbury Park for noticing us, and we look forward. We look forward to our continuous working together. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here representing them? If not, we'll still read it into the records.
Well, I'm here, but I didn't know anything about it.
Well, come on up, Trudy. Come on up.
Proclamation from the city of Asbury Park. Whereas, Donald Hilliard Jr. and the members of Cathedral International, Perth Amboy, New Jersey envisioned a church that would service the needs of its members from the Jersey Shore area. And whereas, that vision was fulfilled in 1995 when services began at 1200 Grand Avenue in Asbury Park, New Jersey. And whereas, Cathedral International Asbury Park helps to address the needs of its community by convening relevant support systems. And whereas, Cathedral International Asbury Park has and continues to bring hope and inspiration to the community over the past 20 years. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park be hereby acknowledged Bishop Donald Hilliard Jr., the pastoral team, and members of Cathedral International Asbury Park, and congratulate them on 20 years of faithful, committed service to the residents of Asbury Park. Be it furthermore resolved that the mayor and city council wish Cathedral International Asbury Park many more six years of successful service to our community.
This will be very appreciated. This is a surprise to me. Our Asbury Park location is actually 20 years, but Cathedral International has three locations. The Perth Amboy location is 150 years, and then we have one in Plainfield. So, I appreciate this. I didn't know, but they're going to be surprised.
Thank you.
All right, we'll continue on to our public participation portion of the meeting. Can I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public?
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order, and after appropriate warning, may terminate any further comments from the speaker. As everyone knows, you have three minutes to speak, and when you come up to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Had a quick question regarding Summerfield Avenue. I noticed that there's the work that's being done on the tracks, and it's barricaded off. I was just curious as to when that would all be resolved and reopened.
Never.
Never?
No. The Department of Transit, DOT, came in and said, "We want to close down three railroad crossings in Asbury Park." We had a brutal fight with them. They have Trump on us, they can outvote us, they can do whatever they want to do. They'd like to get community support. We tried to fight them on Summerfield. Unfortunately, a past employee had agreed to it, and so we were kind of left hanging. Summerfield is going to be closed forever. Closing Summerfield concessions were made. You see the signs on Third, Fourth are going to be redone. Monroe is going to be redone. The Park Place alleyway between Monroe and Summerfield is going to be paved by them. That's going to become a one-way street. They're going to put in a preemption system, so our biggest concern was getting emergency vehicles, especially the fire department, to the southwest quadrant. And we argued with them. We have four crossings, and when there's a train in this crossing here, we lose Springwood, we lose Bangs. You're taking away Summerfield, how do we get the fire trucks to the southwest quadrant? That's been worked out with a preemption system, where the fire department will have the ability to control the lights, which the county picked up the majority of the cost for the city, had to pick up 25% of it. But it was like, they had us, and there was no way of getting out of it. We fought it, we gave it every due diligence. We're not happy about it, but they wanted, at one point, five years ago, they wanted six. They came back in 2013, 2014, and wanted three. They wanted to shut down Summerfield, Third, and Fourth. Are you out of your minds? But again, unfortunately, somebody from the city had agreed to it, so through negotiations, we just got Summerfield, and we did get concessions from them that no other city has gotten as far as a paving of a street and the preemption. And so, they knew how important it was to get emergency services to every quadrant of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Believe me, we're just as disappointed as you, and that's why with the state road diet, with all the detours going on in Asbury Park, it's like, we're becoming like, an island that's getting chopped more and more, and there's only one way in and out anymore, so...
That was my main concern with getting over to that section, because I have property over on Summerfield, and I was just thinking, emergencies or anything like that, that could be problematic.
Totally agree with you, and the fire department was against it, the police department was against it. We did our best. We came out of a no-win situation, getting Sutton with them backing off of two other closings, and then paving other streets, or redoing the crossings of other streets, and the preemption system is the main important thing, to get the fire department to the southwest quadrant as quick as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. I was interested in the comments about the Bradley Cove appraisal. I think you had said it was 3.2 million?
The average of the two, yes.
The average appraisal, 3.2 million. That's the development rights for the best or highest use, or the use that they contemplate, I assume.
The highest use, highest and best use.
Which is all they can do. Okay.
Yeah, maximum build-out.
Okay. I see a fundamental flaw with this whole question of Bradley Cove. The original redevelopment plan only had unit counts. It didn't have value of residential construction. It just had a number of residential construction. And my understanding is the restated, renegotiated, reconstituted developer agreement, whatever it's called these days, has actually reduced unit count, a fixed number of 2,000-some-odd. You're shaking your head, Joe.
Finish, though, because that's not correct.
All right. Well, the plan has always been based on a unit count, not on a value. You know, they're not entitled to build to a certain value of profit. They're allowed to build to a certain number of units. So, I fail to understand why the city needs to purchase back development rights on public property that it actually still owns. It makes no sense to me. All you need to do is increase their count. Give them a couple of extra units in a high-rise somewhere, or an extra floor on a next development that they're doing as a trade-off for not building these in Bradley Cove. It seems like a simple solution without having to pay them money to acquire development rights. So...
Yeah, I can speak on this, and I agree. It doesn't make any sense that you gave away the right-of-way of Ocean Avenue, and it was a mistake. But I think it's clear that everybody understands that the law of the land with the waterfront redevelopment area is the 2002 Redevelopers Agreement. That is the document. There has been no, except for amendment here and amendment there, there has been no fundamental changes to that document. There have been since 2010 discussions of amendments. There was an advisory committee that put up amendments. There have been amendment negotiations, but nothing has been changed. So, that number...
I got 30 seconds. Can I rebut you real quick?
Sure.
It was widely advertised that I-STAR gave up their right to eminent domain in the entire area. They picked specific properties, and they voluntarily reduced the unit count. That was widely publicized. Now, are you telling me that's not true?
The redevelopment attorney is not here. What I'll say is the unit count that's in the 2002 plan is the unit count that they're still operating.
Not my understanding, by reports that were put out about the new negotiated Redeveloper Agreement. The unit count has been reduced, as far as I know, and specific properties have been excluded from eminent domain. They picked and choose.
Right, I believe that.
Okay.
But here's my understanding of the account, and we'll check.
Yeah, but in any case, it's a number. There's a fixed number of units, maximum.
My understanding is that they still have, they're reserving the right to build to that high number, but they want the flexibility to only build to the lower number. But none of that has been codified in a new amendment yet. But let's, that's a great question, and I'll absolutely follow up with our redevelopment attorney, who was, I thought, here. Two, so the Redevelopers Agreement has some specific development pieces in it, right? So, it says they can build this here, they can build that there, and in that context, they have a certain number that they can get to. So, it has an actual specific language that says they have the right to build, to develop that area, and the only thing that they don't have right now is the title, but it's, they, as soon as their final subdivision plan is perfected and filed, meaning that Thailand signs off on it, everybody signs off on it, the city has no recourse but to turn the title over to I-STAR. Legally, we have no option. It's in the Redevelopers Agreement. So, that's where the appraisal comes in. Now, I think your point's a valid one, that everything in the waterfront has a value, and essentially what we're doing is we're seeing what the value is of those development rights, and then what could it be traded for somewhere else? And since we have 1.2 from the county, that'll help. But, right, that's one of the pieces that can be in the negotiations, which I think this council's priority is to get those waterfront amendments and Redevelopers Agreement redone within a year.
Okay.
So, I agree, Warner, but let's, I'll check on the number and get back to you. Good question.
Hi, Rita Morando, Eighth Avenue. I got this letter today about my request. A few weeks back, you posted in The Coaster a big check that we received, $77,000, that the chief financial officer found to be in error, and that we got reimbursed. So, I got curious and applied for all the paperwork that went with that. And I get this letter today. First of all, it says attorney and client privilege. I want to know who the attorney is and who's the client. I thought we were. And thirdly, on the bottom, it says here that there's no records existing. Now, something's going on with this letter. I mean, you couldn't get back $77,000 without any paperwork whatsoever, no voucher, no check, no canceled checks. I don't think you'd do it electronically, do you? You'd get paid electronically? No, I saw the check in The Coaster. It was a big one. You were happy to get it, and I was happy to get it. But when you follow the money and you find out that there's something radically wrong with this, it's not your council's fault. I don't want you to think it's you. But this happened, and it must have been around the time when there was a million telephones in this town, on the street. I don't know. I'm just thinking back to the old days. Does anybody have an answer? Who's the attorney and who's the client? I thought we were, the taxpayer. How can it be an attorney-client privilege?
Are you finished with your...
No, the other thing, I want, two things. The other thing was, as you know, the rumors fly around town, and this one happened to be true, that two of our city workers were working during working hours on a piece of property that belonged to Intifat. They're inquiring about it. They said, "Oh, yes, they were, but we got paid for it." Since when do employees during working hours go work someplace else and get paid? I don't understand that. I need a new sidewalk, too. Can I get two employees to put one down for me during working hours? I just never heard of such things. I don't know if the council's aware of it, but I'd like an answer. Okay. About the telephones.
With regard to the first inquiry about the Oprah request.
Yes.
So, upon receipt of your Oprah request, the city clerk did her due diligence, and we found that there were, in fact, no documents that were responsive to your requests involving the entity as named in your Oprah request. So, the Oprah request was denied because the city had no documents that conformed to your request.
Yeah.
You had one request in particular that was looking for communications involving the attorney. The attorney would be myself, a city attorney. And any communications that would have been sent by me to city officials with regard to this matter would be attorney-client privileged. However, I don't believe there were any such documents that were responsive to your request anyway. But any request for documents between myself and city officials that are legal, you know, providing legal advice, or in any way related to this matter, would be attorney-client privileged.
Well, what's the big secret? You publicized that you got $77,000 back in the big check.
Well, no one's saying that there's a secret here, but we have to respond to the request as presented. And the request as presented, there were no documents that were responsive to it.
In other words, there was no vouchers, no POs?
I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that...
Well, that's what I asked for. I asked for the vouchers, I asked for the POs.
Your request was very specific.
So, what would the request be, then?
Legal, you got to get legal advice, legal advice, sound case.
Okay. Well, what about the other, the two employees during working hours, working at Intifat's property?
You seem to know more about it than us, so if you give us dates and times, we'll look into it.
It was all last week.
It was all last week. You know more than I know.
Ah.
So...
So, there's no answer for that?
I don't have one at this time.
No, but it doesn't sound like it would be the right thing to do to begin with, when two of...
That's why, let us look into it, and we'll get back to you.
Rita, nobody thinks that's right, Rita.
Can I get some specific information from you after the meeting, and I will follow up on it?
Okay. All right.
No, we agree with you. It's the first, everybody thinks because we sit up here, we know what's going on.
Still live in the same house.
We get accused of like, "Oh, you talk to employees. Oh, you ask questions." We get beat up if we ask questions, then we get beat up that we don't know because we don't ask questions. So, I don't know, like, bring me up on ethics charges. Tomorrow, I'm going to ask the questions.
Okay.
But first time I'm hearing about, Rita.
All right.
And I'm glad you brought it to our attention.
I disagree with what Pam said yesterday. That's okay.
Okay.
Okay, Lori Ross. I'm speaking as a former city employee, 374 Long Branch Avenue, Long Branch, New Jersey. I also heard about the rumor. But my concern is, and I know Tony Nucio is not here, so I'll save most of my remarks for him. I'm waiting for a call back from him regarding the community development block grant issue. He was allegedly going to speak to Mr. Raffetto with regards to that. How the city attorney gets involved with that, who knows? But I guess when you have employees that don't know what they're doing, are not qualified, this is what happens. More cost to the city, more cost to the taxpayers, and more cost to the public. With regards to city employees, I applaud the council, particularly Mayor Moore and Councilman Kendall, for asking for a random drug check. I work for the city. As a city employee, I can tell you that if you lit a match by somebody, there were some employees that might have burned up. What goes on in City Hall, the daily operations, is unconscionable. I mean, you have people running around, running things, and they're not even qualified. You have the community development director running around, engaged in personnel matters, engaged in public safety matters as much as she can with regards to the parking meter issue, looking for maps, stepping in the city, assistant city manager's position. This has got to stop. And it's not Mr. Raffetto, "Oh, you'll go to the union," because I was part of the union leadership, and it's what the council says. They set the policy, and it is up to the city manager and the assistant city manager to follow that policy. With regards to a lot of stuff that goes on, I heard that another employee busted a hole in a city wall. I will tell you, I got walked out right after, not four months after, I won my litigation where the court said it was a hostile work environment that shocked the court's conscience. And you mean to tell me you have an employee that's making about $115,000, that goes and puts a hole in the wall, and that same employee is part of a committee that's talking about how to disperse federal funds, and forget about all the stuff that's going on with FEMA? The sad reality is that enough is enough is enough. It is the council, unfortunately, in this form of government, if you talk to somebody, if you say something wrong to anybody, you have to be on your Ps and Qs, but it's the city administration that's in charge of the day-to-day, how people get positions, how people are able to stay in positions, and how there is flagrant fraud, abuse, and waste. Now, this issue with potential city employees on City Time doing work for a nonprofit organization, and the excuse is, "Oh, well, the city's got money for that." What about the equipment that's being used to do that? It's unfair, it's political, and it's corruption. And again, Mayor, I thank you, and I'm glad that, hopefully, the city attorney will make it so that what you ask for, you get.
Thank you. Next.
Tracy Rogers, 900 Monroe Avenue. I wanted to know what was going on with the reconciliation with the FEMA, the $700,000. Has that been any word back on whether they've accepted it or not?
Is that all?
Yeah.
I know our CMFO has been in touch with FEMA, and I feel confident that when it's all resolved, we're going to come out aces. I'm not worried, and I'm Mr. Doom and Gloom. For some reason, when I saw that Mr. Gart said, "We've already given this information," when it was alleged at the fire department, over time, I know the records kept at the fire department, are spot-on. If it was maybe other departments, I might have, maybe you have a problem. I don't think there's a problem there. I think it was just good headlines to sell newspapers. But obviously, we're on top of it. We're trying to resolve it with FEMA. What step we're at, I can't tell you what word, step five, six, seven, because FEMA takes years, and we're still not overstating yet. So, but it is being reviewed, and I feel confident when it's resolved, everything will be fine. I feel confident from what I'm being told.
Let me just, let me just...
Let me just throw that in there.
Hello, Mayor and Council Jerry Scrano, Long Branch. What I wanted to add tonight was, they're going to have a townwide garage sale this weekend in Asbury Park, and I think there's going to be like 40 homes involved in it. So, I think we want to get the word out so people can maybe empty out their attics, their basements, and who knows, they'll find some missing link to something, who knows?
Maybe copper.
What?
Maybe copper.
The copper panels may show up, you never know. I-STAR may be selling them cheap. Anyway, the other thing is, with Bradley Cove, I don't know what the big stink is. Don't they have to get EPA and all these different approvals to build those townhouses? And won't that take years? And it should be a thing. We're doing them a favor by letting them swap out the townhouses to build someplace else in the redevelopment zone. We're helping them, we're not against them. Make it a positive thought. Either you fight with the environmentalists, or we give you a trade-off. But giving any money, or spending money on lawyers that are bleeding us dry, no offense, Fred, why give them money? Save the taxpayer money for a playground or something. And what does Rita have to do? Hire Fred to know how to write the Oprah request that she wants the information on? Hire Fred to know how to write the OPA request that she wants the information on? I really find it hard to believe they just couldn't give the old lady the information she wanted. It's just not right. Reedy used to do this dance all the time. And I used to think, Reedy was the mastermind. I didn't know Fred was pulling the strings. Fred, why don't you just give her what she wants, or tell her what she needs to say so she knows what she wants? Is that simple? Thank you very much.
Number one, how do you call Rita an old lady and she doesn't...
We have that bond.
Oh, okay. If I did that, she'd smack me. Yeah, I wanna go to her Go-Go Bar. I don't know about Rita's request, and I think if Rita goes down, maybe to the city clerk's office tomorrow and explains we can help her with the OPA request. I think you're beating up Fred wrongfully, so I think he was answering the question. I don't think...
He could take the abuse, he's a big boy.
Okay, well... Still respect. Right, we'll try to help you. I don't even know, you said you got the answer today, I didn't even know you asked for it, so I can't answer your question.
No, this one you have.
I know, but, I know, you used to call me, you don't call me anymore.
You got enough problems.
But why don't you go down tomorrow, explain exactly what you want, and then we'll go from there? And I think we can resolve that. And I don't see that being a big deal, is it? Cindy, Fred?
It's financial record she's asking for, it's Ricky's, pretty much Ricky's response.
Okay.
I'm only the middle...
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so, maybe do something else specifically we can tell her to ask for.
Well, she only got the idea from the Coaster. I mean, somebody had to find something out, and she just wanted to know more about it, and be told it doesn't exist.
Again, not knowing the request and not knowing the answer except 30 seconds of Rita saying it, I don't know, maybe there are no records. Maybe we'll find that out tomorrow. Maybe there are, I don't know.
I don't know either, I don't know.
But that's, for the $76,000, yes. But what happened before then, we're still in a quandary. I mean, so it was a surprise to us also when we discovered it last March, February, and we've been looking into it since then, and in July, we get a check. So, go down tomorrow, whenever you get a chance, talk to whoever, and see if we can help you file and get what you're looking for.
And with I-STAR with Bradley Cove, we're doing them a favor by doing a trade-off.
Yeah, let me speak to that, because it was in, I know there was an editorial in the Coaster as well. And, you know, if there's somebody who wishes it could just not be built, it would be me. Right, so, the green, they can't build as currently proposed, which they, because they need a Green Acres diversion from the city of Asbury Park. The city of Asbury Park is not contractually obligated to do that. So the Bradley Cove townhomes, as they are now, cannot be built. However, they are within their right to resubmit plans to planning board, move it out of the Green Acres zone, move it 10 feet out of Thailand's, and apply for a CAFRA permit. And CAFRA is a rubber stamp. So they, and the appraisers agreed, so the appraisers looked at like property, oceanfront property in Long Branch. And if you look at the comps in there, they build the garages downstairs and like some utility room that if you get flooded out, there's nothing down there that's a problem. Not a utility room, but some kind of like little playroom that's not part of your actual living space. And that's like, it's, it's just a wash-through zone, and they build up, and they can, they can get, I looked at the comps. They'll be able to build...
We were given the same comp years ago, and we're told the place was only worth $400,000. It's interesting how they interpret the facts, because we thought it was worth $2 million back then, and they said it was worth $400,000.
No, it's the triangles, $400,000.
What?
The triangles, $400,000.
Yeah, yeah, and I was around that time. I remember saying it was worth $2 million, we needed a new fire truck.
Right, my only point is that I don't think the word on the street should be it's never gonna be built, because if we just sit back and have that thought in six years...
No.
They're gonna build townhouses.
But let somebody else spend the money on the battle. Let the environmental protection, protection, take care of it, EPA, let them deal with it.
They won't, they won't, they won't have to deal with it if they build it differently.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying that...
I wish it was true, Jerry.
Any letters of support to DEP, EPA, whoever, from anybody and everybody, it's deeply appreciated. I agree with Warner, I agree with Joe. We all would love to take that Green Acres money and build a park and not buy the land back. So we are looking, there's amendments, negotiations going on now as far as heights and this and that, so that is an option that's being explored. But it takes two to dance, so right now, only one's dancing. Motion to close? Move it.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? All right, we'll move on to acceptance of minutes. Tonight, we have September 16, 2015, special executive session. September 21, 2015, workshop, workshops meeting. September 23, 2015, executive session. September 23, 2015, regular meeting. September 24, special executive session, and September 29, special executive session. Have a motion to move all those minutes, please.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Next is the consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion on these items. A discussion is desired by one or more council members as a particular item or items. Then said item or item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Tonight, on the consent agenda, we have 2015-347, approving special events wedding applications as presented on October 7, 2015. 2015-348, resolutions authorizing a payment payroll in the amount of $893,447.39. 2015-349, resolution approving catering permit for AP30 Property Holdings LLC for October 17, 2015. 2015-350, resolution approving catering permit for AP30 Property Holders LLC for January 30th and January 31st, 2016. 2015-351, resolution accepting 2016 mental health grant, and resolution 2015-352, resolution authorizing indoor ratifying receipt of bids for solid waste and recyclable materials collection services. Would anybody like any of the resolutions removed from consent agenda?
Just a question. I thought we're gonna get more information about 349 and 350.
We should move it in second. First, I'll move it. One more second. Okay. Okay, now I ask your question.
Okay. I thought we were gonna get more information about 2015-349 and 350.
They're private events. They're not city, so they're not under special events. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to individual resolutions. Resolution 2015-353, resolution authorizing the payment and bills in the amount of $1,403,860.16. Any comments or questions? Motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-354, resolution of the city of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2015 budget for the city of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48, colon, 4-87. This is a chapter 159. Any comments or questions? Motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-355, resolution authorizing the purchase of three police 2016 Chevrolet Impala four-door sedan. Any comments or questions? Motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-356, resolution authorizing the purchase of 2016 police Inceptor AWD utility vehicle. Any comments or questions? Motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-357, resolution authorizing the purchase 2016 Ford Expedition SSV 4x4 for Police Department Firearms Unit. Any comments or questions, please? Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-358, resolution establishing adopting complete streets policy for the city of Asbury Parks. Any comments or questions? Motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-359, resolution of Mayor and City Council of the city of Asbury Park determining that the proposed housing project known as Renaissance Village will address an existing housing need in the city of Asbury Park for home financing for the project. Any comments or questions? Motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-360, resolution of need from the city of Asbury Park, Boston Way Village LLC, Boston Way Village Housing Development. Any comments or questions, please? Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-361, award a bid of roof replacement at the wastewater treatment plant. Any comments or questions? Motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now onto ordinances. We have two ordinances for introduction. The first one's 2015-40, an ordinance vacating Lake Court right-of-way, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Any comments or questions? Have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for this ordinance on October 28, 2015. Next is ordinance 2015-41, an ordinance vacating unnamed alley south of Soul Avenue right-of-way, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Any comments or questions? Motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing for this ordinance is also scheduled for October 28, 2015. Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes.